You are worth the wait.
Okay, Verbal, we've got everybody here. We're just waiting for Ethan to get settled and then call the meeting to order for you.
Awesome, thanks.
Yep.
You settle?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
All meetings were seven forty-one. It is December sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Council meeting, the city of West Liberty, we have tonight with us council member Dominguez, council member Smith, and council member Schultz, as well as city manager Dave Hoagland and deputy city clerk Sherry Hope. Chief Eric Worthing. And Hoagland, please.
Welcome.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Hey, we'll.
Sorry.
Tell me if I'm missing. I'm skipping the center again. Alright, we'll go through.
It's been three weeks.
It's been three weeks, yeah. Verbal's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda, all in favor say hi.
Hi.
We'll move that in preapproval of the consent agenda, which is the special city council meeting minutes from November twenty-eight. The city council meeting minutes from November fifteen and the city clerk treasurer report from October twenty-two.
And we will actually have to table the treasurer report. It was not, yeah, it is not, it is not complete.
Yes, so table the treasurer report items seats. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with these two items?
Motion.
Second. Motion second to approve, all in favor say hi.
Hi.
Move to items, the motion carries three to zero, we'll move to item four, it's a public hearing. For the proposed plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost of the Ringo Drive Maxon Avenue Roadway Improvement Project. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to open the public hearing, the roll call votes, council member Dominguez?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
I do have to the end of the air, we did change the bid date today, from December thirteenth to December twentieth. And this did not change when we'll come back council on January third. Changed notice to proceed, it didn't change when we'll do final completion. What it did do is there was another big DOT type bid that a lot of the contractors were bidding on that day also. So, one of the contractors from this town suggested maybe we change it. I talked to other contractors, they all thought it was a good idea. Talked to the city manager and we did it today. There's rules in the state where it's well within the rules of how, how many days that have normally needed for, we have four.
Okay. Good.
Other than that, I also did send to the city manager today our, we keep a list of all the people that have acquired the plans and specifications and the list is very good. For this type of project, we have a lot of general contractors in hand and a lot of suppliers, so.
Good.
We purposely tried to get this in this time period and hopefully they're slowing down on their other work, they're finishing. And this will be before they go to London, so we're hoping to get there.
Okay. That's great to hear. Has council heard any, any discussion about this in the chair?
I'm trying to remember what we talked about last thing that you were gonna add.
That's gonna be later in the chat.
Okay, got it.
It's there, living, yeah, there you go.
No, I haven't heard anything about the.
Yeah. Oh, I have a question, okay. Alright, if there are no comments, then we are ready for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing, this is another roll call vote up, everybody needs to vote, was that correct? Council member Schultz?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Dominguez? The hearing is closed. We'll move to four, three, it's the motion to adopt the resolution, these are, this is moving forward with the plans for the bids and well, it's, it's the bidding process, I guess basically that we're wanting to move forward with this. Is there a motion to adopt resolution two zero two-two-one-two-zero-six dash three-eight? Motion to adopt.
Second.
Move the second into adopt this resolution to move forward with the bid, is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote, council members Dominguez?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Schultz?
Yes.
Three to zero, the we'll move to number five, vendor voucher claims, this one is higher than normal, I don't know if we can explain this, yeah, there's on the prepaid, we've got all of our interest payments on all of our bonds, if you look down through prepaid list, that's the majority of that increase. Check. As well as our, our, and the ARPA funds are included on that as well. Because our actual claims list was just over a hundred thousand, that was our prepaid, the majority of that, which a lot of work, like I said, the bond, there were bond principal payment of the electric company, there were a lot of interest payments on the various bonds. We also had the annual six week payout that happens every year, and a work comp adjustment premium. Chief's police vehicle was in there that was ordered a year ago and he received, was paid for as well as the funds that went to the ARPA. And some payments for the library project. Let's have a motion to approve this and then we can action that we have a motion to approve the vendor voucher claims.
Second.
Second.
Move the second into approval of vendor voucher claims. Go ahead and prove this.
Sorry, I thought it was a better way. Um, so on number sixteen for the city vehicle repair, is that one vehicle?
No, that was multiple vehicles. And it was multiple months, or bills went back to September, or bills for September, October, November.
Okay, gotcha.
It just took hours while they did some bills for us. And I know on the fire one, which wasn't fine as much as the city side, but they had multiple vehicles that had worked on there. You know, it was about three months worth of bills of those.
There are twenty individual invoices for the nineteen thousand dollars.
They were, a lot of broke vehicle.
The Taurus was three thousand dollars by itself, the last time I got work.
Some were three thousand tires, and they were like, oh, purchased, but I think between the police vehicle and the telehammer had quite a bit of work done. Those are probably the two larger repairs that took place during that time period. Any other questions about?
Um, so.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we have a second, so all in favor of approving the vendor voucher claims list, they eye?
Eye.
Three to zero. Move to public comments. On. Seven, eight, old business. You are. Did you want to see if council party corresponds? Thank you, sir mayor, like I said, I appreciate that, oh, like I said. Council, you have any correspondence, council member Dominguez?
Um, I, I don't know if it's applicable here, kind of is, because we have a good police department, but it's also a school issue. So I've just been getting a lot of complaints from parents that are complaining that nothing is being done about their kids being assaulted in school. And they've said they've reached out to the police, the police don't do anything. They've reached out to school, school doesn't do anything, so that, that's like the third person that's come to me. And I give them resources, I tell them, here's the school board information and things like that, but I just wanted to. Maybe.
It's good you bring it up, I want their chief working if you want to maybe talk about plans for a school resource officer and maybe address this, I don't know.
We have been talking with the school district about the possibility of a school resource officer, what it would look like to fund that, what would the city's responsibility be? What theirs is financially, so having a school resource officer would be a great way to utilize it for things like this, because a lot of the last, personally, the last one that I dealt with, when I talked with the family, they were frustrated that they felt like what they thought should be happening at the school wasn't, and I think it was more a communication thing that the district, in my opinion, was handling it appropriately, but the story the district was telling the family and the story the student was telling the family were not the same story. So it's hard to listen to a story from your kiddo that's different than the district and believe that the district's telling me the right thing and not my student.
Right.
In the case that I dealt with, there was video evidence that supported the district stance and the student said. So, but it was the same thing, it was my students getting bullied and beat up at school, I think was the word they said, and when we researched and we did the research on it, it was, that's not what happened, but I have heard similar things.
Yeah, um, I've been talking to Aunt Sanchez. She worked for you, I think, Aunt Sanchez, and she's still part-time here, sometimes we meet her, assuming.
I wish she would come back.
Um, but she, I mean, we've been talking about this issue like the past probably like year and like definitely offer any support that if the police department wants to do some intervention courses or anything like. I'm all game and I know Maria is too, so free to reach out.
And there is a, we haven't worked out all the details, so we won't get into it a ton, but there is a topic that the principal at the high school wants us to partner with them to do some teaching to the students about a specific thing. Until we get it ironed out, I don't want to talk about what it is, because it's, it's their project and their training, and just offered our assistance to go in and help with it to give the law a part of why the topic is a good one to discuss and learn about, so. But that, that sort of frustration, I've heard from a few parents, but every time we get into it, it's usually there's a difference in the story between the student and what the district is saying. And I think that's where the frustration is coming from.
Yeah. Alright, thank you. I have a question, what building is this at? So one incident happened in the middle school, one incident happened in elementary, and one incident happened in high school, actually two incidents, so it's four. Parents, different parents, different kids. And this is over the past year, maybe not like just recently.
I can't speak as a representative of the school, but I can say I've been working there for ten years, I know that there is a bullying and like harassment assault platform, and it's a, it's a school board policy that, that shouldn't go out when it happens. And illegally has to be investigated by the level one investigator, and then, you know, some kind of resolution has to happen, but due to FOPA, like Federal Education Right Courtesy Act, they can, the district cannot tell necessarily the victim, this is what happened to your whatever, so sometimes the perception is that nothing is being done about it, but what actually is happening is something has been done about it, but it took place behind closed doors and the district, we cannot tell the parents, this is what we did about it. So I cannot say that that's what's happening in these instances, but I would definitely urge, if, if the parents had not already, to fill out the big reports that need to be investigated by the level one investigator.
I didn't know that existed.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the school website, under the, I believe it's in the, like the school board section of the website, and it also be in the parents and students section of the website, but if they had children, yeah, show the central office, they're supposed to be able to point that important.
Awesome, thank you, actually.
That's all.
Anything else to add about that?
Um, I think that that's a, a great point to bring up too, because it's like HR at work, they can't tell you like, oh, this is what we did to discipline this person, so it's that's the other part of it, is they can handle it, but they can't tell everybody what they're doing, and I think that's probably part of the frustration. And I'm speaking for the one that I've specifically handled, I think the parents were okay with the resolution, because I, I went and made sure that the district did follow their policy, did fill everything out, did do the investigation, and I told the parents, I'm, I'm sure that they did, but I will go check. But it's still frustrating when, regardless of how your student is involved, it's still frustrating when something like that happens, so. It's, but I, from my opinion, and for everybody I've seen, they, they're doing a good job, they're doing it the right way, but having that extra resource would probably be I don't know, more peace of mind for parents too, so it's good.
And it's on going issue, and you have a paper teller documentation that says on the state, the state, the state, I have these papers.
Great.
But.
Great, you know, that's for.
Public comments.
Um, the only thing is that I saw online question, you know, why the, we pick up head not have it yet, and so I, I saw that there was some dialogue back and forth with explanations about that.
Yeah, there's, there's a part for the not the truck, the back, the back that actually pulls it. And then on back order, the last we had heard was, just quite a lot Friday, we had to see, but we did offer people, one of the bags, we pick up bags for the next two weeks, so comes in, we'll still have a lot of, as soon as guys will be out.
If it does, and this is, I'm asking this because I would genuinely want this out in my house, not in the street, so that was a bit, not in the street, but on the lawn, on the lawn.
Thank you for the right.
Uh, and if, if it snows and they get covered up in the spring, when it's like frost, do they come around and suck it up then, or does that, we have to put all the wet socks on here?
Yeah, Adam's on here.
Adam, would you like to address it, please?
Um, so yeah, like, like Dave said, the, I wasn't told when I ordered the part, the day it broke, it's a, it's a sprocket that moves the the arm up and down and and out. I wasn't told today I ordered it, that it was on back order, but as far as coming back around, we have never done that, but we've also never been in this situation. My guys did go around today and pick up all the brush and the cans of brush and bags of leaves and sticks that were out today. There was, I don't know, three or four dump, one ton dump bodies full. I'm hoping the parts here today, but we will be out there until there's probably four or five inches of snow. We can still pick it up with a dusty and a snow or whatever on top, but anything more than a couple inches, we can't really do much with. So as of right now, we're still gonna get it picked up.
But I guess if, if we do get a big snow before it is, that's something we can consider it spring. Still picking them up later in the spring then, Adam?
Um. We can try, but once they get matted down, wet, heavy, full of sand and all that stuff from the roads, I don't know how well it's gonna pick up, but I mean, we can try it if we come to that.
Actually, I will help you if that happens. There's no way.
Do you see the looks on your face?
He hasn't even written our own leaves.
As of right now, though, to be clear about it, there are two options for residents, if we can just clarify, the, since when the part comes in, then they will be picked up as long as it hasn't snowed heavily. Or if you don't want to wait for that, you can get bags and bag them, it's gonna be picked up, and they have plenty of bags at city hall, people can stop them, that's the people coming back from the last few days.
Are they just like the?
They're the big tall brown.
Like Menards bags?
Yeah, Menards, Walmart, we, I mean, I think.
The paper bags?
Yeah.
You get five for like two bucks.
Yeah. We have some aircraft.
Five bags for two dollars at city hall if you want to do the bag. Two rounds, yeah, it's two bucks for five layers. And I know Walmart's like three or something.
Yes, I'll make that the correspondence.
If I could, great, thank you. If I could, I don't mean to say great, like anybody. Uh, if I could interject one thing, that I did have some discussion, or there was, I think, on Facebook about the brush pickup, and I wonder if someone can take on the task of maybe looking at adjusting the dates of that the next year. Uh, I think if that seems reasonable, to maybe stretch it out a little bit later into the fall. Well, that's, that's something that I think it's, it's set up, and I think in the past, I think council last year for the council change, I think it was, it was warm, it was decent, and they, and they did extend it at some councils and stuff. And do, maintain the fall, get to that point, you know, there's a lot of leaves on the trees, and things are happening. They, I think they did extend it last year, I'm stating, is that correct?
Uh, it used to go until the first week in November, but the last two times of the, of the year of doing it is a waste of time. We were, we would be done picking the brush up in about thirty minutes. And we would make a dozen stops if that. Again, this year it's been a little bit warmer than usual, but uh, yeah, we, we actually took it back this last year because it's basically a waste of time to do it that late into October or even the first part of November, there's just never anything out. I mean, we'll, we'll do whatever, but that's, we, we, we took it back because of that.
Right, okay, well, we can look at the next call, see if there's. See how the weather is, yes. Great, council member Schultz, public correspondence?
I had an inquiry today, I was thinking about where we are with working fire department and doing that, and I just realized that for getting that day tonight, so.
Yes. You have something you want to share with, share on that later on?
I can just share during committees.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Okay, great. City manager Hoagland. For the two, Ben?
Um, I have just noticed a lot of difference in the front office, having people come in. The two new hires have been doing a phenomenal job and the people are smiling and talking, that obviously they're still upset people, but I've noticed a big shift in the environment in the front staff, so a lot of people have been coming in and people that know them will be like, oh, hey, it's nice to see a familiar face, just little comments like that, so I can tell that there is hopefully going to be a shift towards a more upbeat environment in that front, because they're, like, all of them are willing to help, so. It's been very nice, they are doing phenomenal, so.
Awesome, that's great to hear, and I enjoyed stopping in and watching the rush when builders do, everyone coming in, and then I stopped in again for, on the day when they make the calls, that you're gonna get your electric shut off. And so I, I may have made a call. It's interesting to see the people, some of the, the, it's, it's an interesting experience to be there and.
It's definitely nice, yeah, it's.
Behind the, in that, in that room, behind the glass, it just seems like they're.
Yes, they have done phenomenal, so I'm very grateful to have the new staff and have the existing staff that we have, we have started working together very well, so it's nice to have that support system in there, and it's nice to be able to have the customers come in and recognize people that are helping them, that's very beneficial, especially in a small town, so.
I would ask that, that I recognize all of that, that's great. And I agree with that, I'm just taking everything in stride, it's still positive. Good, good things.
Yes.
Um, we're going to item number seven, A, old business. And this is accepting the the electric engineers' report and recommendations, so if I understand that right, this is, this is accepting the recommendations as opposed to yeah, and if you accept them this evening, then ordinances would have, or I think Verbal's already updated the ordinances for, so we're going to be put into a final form of the council. So the process is, we are, we're gonna go through these recommendations again briefly here with Verbal. Approve them if you agree, and then we'll do the legal works of actually coming to the practice. Is there a motion to adopt and accept the BHMG recommendations?
Motion to approve the BHMG recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Okay. And now you can have Verbal kind of talk about, yeah, because I know she
Right.
Recommendation, you went through this work session, but there's been two updates to it per capital request, so yeah, Verbal, keep it away and walk through this.
Sure, and we'll just kind of go through the, the recommendations that are listed on page fifteen of your report, and then I'll point out the differences of what we've updated since our work session. And as we talked about in the work session, it's appropriate to increase your residential customer charge from fifteen dollars a month to twenty-five dollars a month, and that will bring the charge closer to what the cost calculation is to cost to serve the customers. Um, in addition to that, the commercial municipal and large industrial rates are behind on right rate of return a little bit, so we recommend to raise those a penny a kilowatt hour. Um, and then also just knowing that if there is a loss of a large industrial customer in the near future, that this will have to be looked at again, so we've made some projections of what that might look like, but certainly that needs to be addressed again, that, that would be a trigger to do the study again before a typical five-year cycle. And also in your existing ordinance, you have some, an operating, is this operating expense adjustment that I don't think is being implemented right now, but we're recommending that you update that to five percent. And it's an automatic annual adjustment on only the non-energy part of your rate, which is about sixty-five, about thirty-five percent of your rate. So it's not a five percent increase every year, it's a five percent of thirty-five percent. And that would be an automatic, at beginning of the fiscal year adjustment, that can be voted to not happen on a particular year where you, where you see that maybe your inflationary costs haven't hit something that high, but otherwise it would be automatic. And then the last update that we are recommending is, this, this, the feedback from management is that the, your cost adjustment every month that goes on your electric bill seems to be a little bit dramatic and changes sometimes, and like the, the difference between the month before may be a little bit more of a change than, than ideal, so in order to try to flatten that out a little bit, you can take the averaging period from three months, which is what it is today, and move it to six months. So we did a calculation for that, and it does flatten the curve out a little bit, that, the cost of that is a bit of a cash impact on the city, because you're taking expenses and averaging them over a rolling six months instead of a rolling three. But it was a bit of a compromise in order to try to flatten out the differentials in those rates every month, those adjustments every month. So those are the, the five recommendations that we have in the study. Um, it's just to show you what, what your margins look like on those exhibits, um. We're gonna look at page exhibit eight and exhibit seven, page one of each of them, and I don't know if you want me to share my screen, or if you guys just want to pull up to that page.
We'll just look at them here, it's, it's too hard to see the screen from where we are, but.
Okay, sure.
Help us find the page that you were looking at.
Sure, so if you, we start with exhibit seven, page one. So that's probably, you know, like halfway through the exhibits.
Seven pages.
Yep.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Yes.
So exhibit seven, page one, page one is just a summary of the five pages in each exhibit. Exhibit eight as well, those two are the additional exhibits that show what the rating, what the impact of the penny a kilowatt hour rate increase is with also that residential customer charge increase. Um, one is with, with your large industrial customer and one is without. So if you look at lines seventeen, okay, so if we go to, um, if we go to exhibit seven, that's the one without the customer, the large customer, then you look at line eighteen, you'll see where your margin settles out at just under ten percent and and how it sells out across the board. On exhibit eight, that's if you still have your existing, large existing customer. The margins again on line seventeen will be what you will be looking at, and so that's the impact of raising those commercial rates or non, I should say, non-residential rates.
In exhibit eight, it's, is it line sixteen?
Oh, so you're actually gonna look at line seventeen, it's the rate of return on operating revenue, not on expense, so it's line eighteen on exhibit seven, because there's an extra line up there.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, so it's eighteen on exhibit seven and then line seven, line seventeen. Yeah, so it's eighteen on exhibit seven and then line seven, line seventeen on exhibit eight. Um, the difference on exhibit seven, when you lose your large customer, um, a large customer that's significant, the, um, there is your cost, monthly cost adjustment is gonna automatically rise because your average wholesale cost is automatically gonna rise. So we had to factor that in as well, so that created an extra revenue line. That's what pushed it, that's what made them not line up, if you will. So, um, so that's one thing to note, though, it, it's a, it's a very big deal if you lose a large customer that is, um, you know, that lar, that customer is, uh, just under half of your load and has a very nice load factor, meaning like a, a good efficiency of usage versus capacity, which keeps your average wholesale cost down. So if that customer goes away, your average wholesale cost per kilowatt hour goes up. So that is an organic increase in cost to your customers because it gets passed through to your cost adjustment. Plus, you're gonna have, they won't be contributing to your non-energy costs any longer either, so. So what the penny a kilowatt hour does is allows you to have some, moves you where you need to be with that customer and provides you a less of a gap to fill if you lose that customer.
So just to make sure I follow what you just said about the average cost going up, uh, in, in, uh, exhibit seven, if I look at line twenty-four, is that a good line to look at, the average purchase power cost? Twenty-three and exhibit eight?
Okay, so on.
Oh, that's not, they can't be right, that's the other way.
No, that is, is going the other way. So if you look at the, um, so, and there, let me look at that one on, um, on a spreadsheet model, because that may be pulling the wrong number. Because it shouldn't be going that direction. If you look at line twenty-two, you can see the impact of your revenue. The revenue will be driven up by the cost adjustment, so you can see the impact of that on line twenty-two. Twenty-two on exhibit seven versus twenty-one on exhibit eight.
And seven is without eight is with.
Correct.
The big one.
Seven, yeah, it says on the top, less large commercial customer.
This is that brings it.
It does say that.
That's just not.
Uh, no, exhibit on the.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah. It's, it's a. It's, it's a very.
So Verbal, are you saying that with any increase, that's actually the thing that the mayor brought it up and, and asked you to look into this because it helps fill that gap if we were to use that?
Mm-hmm. So right now you have, you have a gap already that you need, that you, you need filled in funding. And so if you raise that now, it, it moves the rates to the appropriate place they should be, but also helps bridge that gap if you were to, um, to lose that customer. It doesn't mean that that's all that you'll have to do, but it'll certainly be much, you'll be a step ahead.
Right.
Or serve to where you need to be.
In really rough terms, right now, we would be about a half million dollars in the hole. And this puts us at about quarter million after these adjustments in the hole, so there's an improvement there. Precisely. There's more work to be done, but the council, do you, do you, uh, do you follow all these adjustments that are, that are recommended?
Yeah, so we get the five adjustments, I think all of that, based total sense, I'm concerned that, uh, yes, adjustment number one, the flat fee changing it from fifteen to twenty-five across the board for some households. A ten dollar increase in width is now the deal for some households, ten dollars a month is a big deal. I'm wondering if this is, if this is, uh, recommendation that is, we're looking at, you know, over the next four or five years to do this. I wonder, could, for the next calendar year, could we raise it from fifteen to twenty, or the following calendar year, could we raise it from twenty to twenty-five? Can we spread, can we make that a more gradual, um, change over the course of the next two years? So that it's not going from fifteen to twenty-five instantly?
I'm sure that's something that can be done.
Right, so would, would, would that have drastically terrible at that time?
Right. Um, I think the, what is, what is the, what is the commercial customer charge right now?
Fifty.
Fifty? And that's a hundred, so this is, I think the goal is to kind of just try to get it more, more in line with the actual cost of service. I totally, I'm a hundred percent in line with you and I, uh, I was on council when we raised the commercial to, to fifty and I, I kind of wasn't I had very big feelings about that, let's put it that way. Uh, and, and it wasn't too real about that, so I don't know if we want to go. That would mean asking Verbal to go back around and do some more studies and things like that, so I, I guess I would probably.
Well, to be honest, I, I don't know that I hope and will voting to improve this tonight with only three out of five of us here. Anyway, you know, without Kara's opinion and, and, and my opinion, so I don't know if it's appropriate to go, I mean, I know we can't report tonight, but I don't know.
Yeah, I respect that for sure. Um, how about the other, the other pieces of this, let's set that aside for this second, the other pieces of this, uh, lumped simple watt hour to for municipal and large industrial. Um, and item four, the operating expense adjustment, do these all make sense and you feel good about? These, um, changing the averaging period for the, for the power charge. I, I want to talk about that for just a second, uh, that's one of the things that I personally have heard a lot about in the city is people are getting really confused. Like, why didn't my bill change? You know, my usage didn't change, right? And so I didn't understand it and I spent time talking with city staff at city hall and, and, uh, just yesterday I was talking to Rena to, to, to understand more about what goes into that. And so now, now I kind of have a little bit more of an understanding, but David and I have been talking about, maybe if we stretched out that averaging period, it might help. Verbal, do you, do you have those graphs that, that you can share, that you shared with, uh?
I do. I was just looking for those, I, um.
Right, was the one you checked out?
Oh, but is that?
It, it, yeah, twelve months is not the way to go.
Yeah.
Twelve will cause some issues.
Do you see, Sharon, you see problems going from three to six?
I would say that six would be the absolute maximum that you guys would want to go. Just with, because you, you're talking averaging over six months, all of those items, whereas right now they're over three. So you do have those, that, like, our graph is kind of up and down and up and down where people are paying high and then graphing, so the red line.
Here's, here's kind of.
So you'll see those peaks and those drops where people are getting credits and then they're being billed more and then credits and then billed more. What's gonna happen when you level that out? The bills are still, so let's say that somebody's bill is higher, like, on average, they're not gonna have that seventy-five dollar excess that's gonna be put on there, but then it's gonna be a lot more level throughout there.
Right.
Um, bills are obviously gonna change and fluctuate regardless, but you're looking at a little bit of a straighter line in comparison to what we're looking at right now.
This, this is the three-month chart, is it not, Verbal?
So the three-month chart is the red line and the blue line is the six-month chart. So you can see the difference in the volatility of a three-month line versus a, a so if we did a one, a month-to-month line, it would be much more volatile. So, you know, by averaging it over three months, you've already compressed some of the volatility with the averaging period, but stretching it out to a six-month averaging period, you get the blue line, which is a little flatter.
As you know, on a really tight budget, I mean, if you do budget everything, then it's more predictable.
Well, and I want you guys to be aware, there's still gonna be fluctuation because you can still see the peaks and drops in there. It just may be forty dollars instead of sixty dollars. It may, it just is gonna be slightly different. People are probably not gonna notice that. They're still gonna see the ups and downs on there, but it's gonna be a little bit.
And also if you notice this last year, it's all positive. So there's always been a positive adjustment and that's because the cost of wholesale power is increasing. So there is a cost, a positive adjustment, um, going forward. Like, your negative adjustments were back here in early twenty-one, so we don't anticipate that to happen. In fact, we get some updated information from RPGI that would lend us to believe that we're not gonna go back negative.
Yep.
The point being though is you see how these, how the fluctuation from month to month can be pretty steep or a cost a couple of months. It won't be that way, it'll be more flat, more predictable.
Right. Okay. Does that, yeah, does that make sense? That's not gonna solve everybody's problem, but maybe.
It should help.
Yeah.
Right.
Correct.
Ver, ver, Verbal, your thoughts on if we implement the ten-dollar charge over a two-year period?
So that's about eighty-five thousand dollars a year, um, you're cash-wise, you know, it's not ideal, but it, that's really a policy decision. You know, I think you, you need to be at the fifth, you need to be at the, um, the higher rate to cover your costs, like, to be cost-appropriate in a rate structure, but whether or not you do that over two years, I'm, I think it'd be okay. The, my, my, um, experience with, when you increase things over time is that they don't, they get upset all over again when it goes up the second time, so. You know, I mean, it may or may not, um, give you what you're looking for. However, if you go out front at the very beginning and say it's part this year, part next year, you have, there's value in that.
Yeah, I don't like that, actually.
Yeah, especially because, I mean, this is gonna take effect like the day that we pass the ordinance, right?
You can put an effective date in your ordinance.
Okay.
You, yeah, you would put an effective date of when you want that. So sometimes it's for the next fiscal year, sometimes it's the month in advance, sometimes it's immediately. It just depends on how that verbiage is written in that ordinance.
You know, like, say we pass it next, next meeting event that starts in January, it's right after holidays, maybe people have a budget for this.
You'll probably be doing, I mean, I would imagine with the rate.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll have the three hearings.
Got it, okay.
You're not coming with the press, so it'll take a long six.
And you can certainly make those effective anytime you, you know, at any point. So if you decide, like, let's say you're gonna read the, um, ordinances and you're gonna go through, like, the month of January, you can make it effective in March if you need to, instead of like the next meeting. But in that ordinance, I would, if you decide to state, to phase in the customer charge increase, then you would put that in that same ordinance, it would just have, the additional one would have a, a year delay.
Hey, and Verbal, can you talk to them about the implementation of the six-month period? The timeframe that we would want to be looking at so that it's more beneficial?
Right, so the way the cost adjustment, um, works, it's a little bit different than what you would expect. It, it fluctuates the most, it hits the high the most in the shoulder months, meaning like the spring and the fall, because you're coming out of a, a higher efficiency area. Even though the cost is higher in the summer, the cost per kilowatt hour is typically a little cheaper. So in the winter and some, the summer, I'm sorry, spring and fall months, it's a little bit higher. So that would be, um, we want to be careful about the months that we go back and average. That way it doesn't, um, adversely affect that particular month that you start the averaging period in. So then now that you've said that, I have to remember when we actually recommended to do it, because I ran some numbers on that.
You were looking at February.
Yeah, so I, yeah, so I think that's when, when normally it would start to rise in that, um, spring, we would implement it then and go back to the, the six-month averaging, which will pull it down a little bit.
So right after we get our income tax return, if we get one, we'll be ready.
Um, yeah, the idea is it flattens it a little bit, right? So hopefully, uh, yeah, are you saying that there might be a, yeah, that first increase when you switch to six months could be?
If you don't put it in the right month, it's not gonna be.
Yeah, it's not gonna be beneficial if it's not done in the correct month.
Yeah. Okay, um, are there any questions you, you discussed about this here? So there's a, there's a motion and a second to accept this as written. Um, do, do you want to amend that to recommend that we phase that in over two years instead of just making them dumb?
I don't know, does anybody have some strong feelings on it? I mean, again, like, I know very usually has opinions on this, like, weird assiness without knowing what she thinks about it, but we're just, that's some strong feelings, but. Well, if, if Kara comes back and watches the meeting and we pass something, can she come back and ask for a motion to reconsider? Does it work that way or?
Well, if, if you approve this and you come back, whether you adopt this or you adopted by amendment, you had your first reading, then if you'd have further discussion, it changes, it'd be no difference like the golf cart or if it's, it would start now. At least you have three hundred, it's, it will change.
And we're not even starting the readings today, we're just, we're just saying, proceed with the plan, you know, so.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think between, you know. Sure, though, you know, or have her watching this dialogue with, or with her, seeing what she supports.
And I do feel somewhere, I do, I don't want for anybody around the city with higher rates, but also knowing that you can, we can talk about when we do want to start this and set when we do.
I guess, I, I would say, if you, if you feel that way, then I would amend, I guess I recommend to council to amend the, the motion.
And then we pass it that way and the only thing that, that I would point out is that
previously the city should have been doing these annual adjustments and they weren't that, that's part of the reason too why we're in the position that we're in. The rep is just not there where, where we, we, had they been implementing.
Now, Verbal, is that originally a three percent increase in the last study?
It was three percent. At the time, inflation wasn't rising like it is now, but.
But none of those adjustments took place over the last time.
So does this talk about, um, when that adjustment, it would be the beginning of the year, each year?
We, we would do this probably the fiscal years when that adjustment takes place, I can, I mean, like.
The proposed language for the adjustment is to start the beginning of the fiscal, of the beginning of every fiscal year.
Okay.
So the first time you put that adjustment into effect would be on July one of twenty-three. Um, so with the report as is, you know, we talked about the projection of what happens if you go ahead and increase it, you know, the, the ten dollars now. Um, but I think that you could just give direction to, um, your staff that's going to create the ordinance that delay, puts a phases it in. Um, without doing any modifications to the study. I mean, you guys can pass whatever motion you want tonight, but I think that you could give direction to the staff before the ordinance even comes for vote that has these nuances in it that we want it to, you know, we want it to be phased in for the rating, the customer charge increase. And we want it to go into effect at whatever particular day that is.
Right.
Okay, yeah. That makes sense. Remind us what you said was the, uh, the dollar amount that we're talking about when we, we talk about this customer charge. You said eighty-five thousand, but help me understand exactly what you're saying.
So, um, the, so if you do it five dollars at a time, um, five dollars, the five dollar a month increase. So, let me just get my dollars. So the, the, okay, I didn't calculate that right, because five times twelve. Okay, right, so it's like forty-six thousand dollars a year for, for, in residential revenue for five dollars. So you're going to be delaying the other forty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
By one year. In the whole scheme of things, that's not going to make or break your bank account.
Yeah, okay.
First, it'll make a difference for some people.
Absolutely, I like that.
And it could be another employee, I mean, part-time. That's it, um, or six thousand a year.
Well, right, sure. Well, yeah, this is electric, you have to remember that, that the, the study also called for an additional staff person hired in my treatment, that's why those rates were different.
Okay, so let me amend that conversation. I just looked at the wrong number of customers that you have in residential, so I'm sorry. Let me calculate that again. I have too many spreadsheets open. Okay, it, it is eighty-one thousand, I thought, where did I get the eighty thousand? It's eighty-one, the five dollars is eighty-one thousand dollars a year for residential revenue. So you would be delaying eighty-one thousand dollars by one more year. A year for residential revenue. So you would be delaying eighty one thousand dollars by one more year.
Okay, so what's the right uh, way to do this?
I think I would just go since you've got the motion approved, I think you wanna approve the study like what verbal has said, and that council decides that you wanna. Ask staff to prepare the ordinance later to set, you know, I mean, I think you, you could have discussions at the next meeting. To say, you know, do we wanna implement this, you know, and March, and we know that we want it in February for the. Or for the six month, that you can decide when you wanna implement the uh, customer charge, then if you wanna spread that over to. You can have that discussion at your next meeting, have your ones prepared for the first meeting, January, you can still meet your. Sure, if you're looking for March to start it in March, you'd still be able to do that then prior to that much deadline.
Did she say we wanted to start it in February?
The actual like our, the PDI is what she was talking about.
Because we won't have the five percent of the thirty five percent wouldn't be effective until July. But you have the option of deciding when you want to increase that five or ten dollars. So if you have a discussion at your next meeting, then direct staff, you know, in, in January, we'd like to have the first reading based on this. You can have that pass and then you can do something by lunch.
Sure, does that sound workable? Because that sounds good. The, the recommendation itself doesn't have dates in it, so it's just, we're gonna get it. From fifteen to twenty five and, and break it up if you, if you want. All right, it's been moved and seconded then to accept all five of these recommendations um, uh. Um, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed say no. So the, the motion carries three to zero. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
No problem. Have a great evening.
We'll move on to seven B, considering. The motion to adopt and accept the Columbus Street sidewalk proposals, weirder words you've never heard. Is there a motion to, to approve?
Motion.
Motion and seconded to approve um. We hope that you walk us through this.
Sure, you guys have the, the graphics, the materials. That shows. So what we did is just put something on aerial just for sexual purposes. And what we did is we connected east, uh, our connected Rainbow Drive. And we basically looked at from the magic site in Muscatine County where the, where the um, property lines are. And we put the sidewalk just inside of the side of the, of the property lines. We tried to avoid the power poles, some of that stuff. We, of course, we don't have a survey, so this is just an attempt at that. If you want length, so we said it's six hundred sixty one feet. We know that we have to have um, uh, eighty eight ramps at that twenty, twenty six. And as well as Rainbow, which we had in mind. And then we, we also know there's a business that has a very big. Um, I guess it's a gravel approach. So putting a concrete sidewalk through the gravel approach. Typically, you put concrete on the side that goes out to the road. That is a DOT road. We probably will have to coordinate the DOT to make sure, because sometimes they wanna make it just a smaller entrance. We can deal with all that if you decide to go forward. But then the question is, approximately, we use the estimate of. Costs based on um, what our engineers estimate around, around um, Maxim and. And Rainbow. And then we put that cost estimate together and we showed you the numbers there, which came out to about fifty nine thousand dollars. Our thoughts are we wait till we get the bids. And then we see what those bids are, we come back with actual costs, he's just engineers, right? He'll tell you exactly what it'd be. When we go from there. We probably have to do a little bit more survey on our end. Because the contractor's not gonna wanna do it without survey. You have to be able to tell him here's how to build it, what you're gonna accept and all that. If you'd want us to do that, we could do that right now. We could just prepare an amendment to our contract that we have on Max. For five thousand, five hundred dollars. And then it would be ready to go. If you're not sure you wanna do it, I wouldn't do that. But if you're sure you're gonna do it one way or the other, have us do that and it'll be ready as soon as the contractor.
So that, we don't see any paperwork on that, what you're describing right now, right?
You've got the cost estimate, right?
The cost estimate for the actual.
If you go down to the second line from the bottom, it shows what I have for engineering. That's what I'd come back with an amendment for you. I don't, I didn't prepare the amendment. If you want the amendment. It's not critical, because if you waited until this, till you see the bids next month. We could still go out and do this, do the um, survey, it might be spring before we can get there because of the snow or something like that. Almost now, we'll probably go out and survey it, but trying to get it before. But that's something, they'll be out there doing construction for a long time, so we make it fair.
It doesn't delay the project at all if we, if we wait or.
But, but I think too, originally before. There are missing savings, there's another utility work that they've done, save some dollars that are based on what we originally thought.
We actually saved some of the, Danny and the guys who worked with uh, sanitary, it was in pretty good shape. So we decided we didn't need to replace it. That was big savings.
Does everyone follow this? Uh, the stairs sidewalk would be moving down along here, you know, past subway, past car wash, down past these, down to.
And, and not quite the BP, there's already a sidewalk, the little red building, I think it's a restaurant.
Everything's gray on ours. But I know what you mean.
Yeah, this one right here, it used to be a Mexican type restaurant. And there's a sidewalk that comes up from Maxim Street to there. And we're gonna connect there. That sidewalk looked pretty good and done at Maxim, it already has good Indiana.
Um, no, I know that there gets to be some heavier traffic in through. Like LJB, because I know they get a lot of semis through there and a lot of.
Right.
County vehicles and different things. So the sidewalk scoots through there. My question is, is like, was Stan?
You look at the cost estimate, we showed it, we showed two types of sidewalk, concrete. We showed a four inch, which would be the normal sidewalk. And then we showed six inch. When we go through driveways where trucks and things will be rolling over. So we do this all the time, we're, we thicken that concrete. Put rock underneath it in those areas, just to make sure it's okay.
And with the drive approach, we put it as part of that, that helps.
And the drive approach would all be six inches.
This might be a really dumb question. Um, so the Columbus Street gets plowed by like a big old, like big plows. So when they come through in the winter and they shoot the snow off to the side, is that gonna go all over the sidewalk? Or is that, are they far enough away that they're not gonna? So then is that gonna be every time the snowplow comes by, are the business owners gonna have to go out and shovel the sidewalk again?
If you wanna actually load it all the time in the winter, correct.
I don't think it was gonna like that.
It might not like that. City, that, that, that's where you're not sure if that enters. But I'm sure that's how it is all over town. I suspect everywhere that there is sidewalk, that the plows. Plow it on there, people have to get it off when we're the.
Right.
This would be a little tougher because it's high.
Right, I mean, like the side streets, maybe you like once, but like the highway.
Don't wanna get into the politics, but cities are um. Very varied on how they enforce um, that sidewalk, you know, as, if, if it's plowed three times in a week. Maybe they're not checking until the following week, you know. Yeah, it's not the first time I've heard that issue.
It is, it is an issue and at the same time, you know, we. Choose to live in the city and.
But I think that would be. The, the person that has the big gravel.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we negotiate with that person and say, hey, we'd like to give you a nice concrete drive in, which a lot of them really like.
Yeah.
And we'd like to make it smaller, then you have a smaller sidewalk that you would have to, and it would win-win. The DOT wins, because the DOT really doesn't like that stuff because it's dangerous. And that's their whole issue of danger.
Who would undertake that negotiation?
I, I would. I would, when we, when we do the project, I would be there.
So if we approve this, does it just like happen? Or is there like a public hearing and people come in and say, I don't want this, I do want this?
Because it would just happen, because it would be a change order to the contract. We would come back to you with an amendment to the N K's contract. We'd have to then do a change order to the contractor's contract.
Yeah.
But there is no public, like today, we had a public hearing.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not involved. We could do that.
Yeah.
If you feel like we should and the city really wants to do it, that's not a hard thing to do.
Okay.
I mean, we could do that very easily. There's no legal. Like we have to do a public hearing on a normal project.
I think it's just like, consider it to talk to the business owners and stuff like that to you. Before that, because they might be like, yeah, do it, and you don't need a public hearing.
Typically, you talk to business owners, whether you like it or not, because as soon as they see my surveyors out there. They're gonna be asking us almost all the time.
We love these businesses and, and.
And, and I would be glad.
Um, yeah, but, but I think we, you know, we need sidewalks.
And the one up by Subway, if we had to move that toward the road, it would get real expensive fast.
Yeah.
Because there's lots of utility problems and a big dip. So I try to keep it away from that as best I could.
I mean, at a public hearing, you don't necessarily have to take the advice of the public, but you at least hear what they say, right?
Well, you saw what the public hearing tonight was.
Right.
Typically what happened, if I go door to door and talk to these people.
Yeah.
That will get their opinions and then they would come to the public hearing if they were against it.
Okay.
I would do that.
Okay, cool.
Okay, all right.
So how do we make that happen?
But have a public hearing before we finalize it.
Whatever Leo's.
And I can come back and put that into an amendment to my contract.
Okay.
Have him, have, have they approve it, or you can have bring it back next, next council. Doesn't matter. That's the, the dollar thing that you see and this is the drawing on you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, before we sink sixty grand in this country or into sidewalks and buildings, we should check it.
So right now, you'd be paying the five thousand, what? That's all you'd be committed to at this time.
Yeah, and the rest is an estimate, what you're saying.
The rest of the estimate. And we, we have a, we put in there that we'd do a public hearing type in beforehand.
Yeah.
And don't go forward with the change order until that public.
Sure, that all sounds, that all sounds. You're saying, does that sound reasonable? All right, so it's been moved and seconded to accept uh, this recommendation. We need to have an, an amendment to that to uh, to, to get in some of these nuances, or are we okay with that?
Yeah, cuz he's saying he will amend his.
Should we amend it to uh, allow you to sign it when that comes through the amendment?
I don't know, actually.
Only to allow uh, city manager hoping to sign the, the changes. And we'd have to come back to you typically.
Oh, yeah.
Can we accept that as an official amendment? Do you want it to be restated?
What, how exactly are you wanting it to be stated? So that I can have that in the meeting minutes? Cuz he's ma- cuz he's making the amendment to include that, correct? You're gonna, like, to your change, you're gonna make that on there?
They're gonna make a motion to adopt and accept.
We have a problem though, because this one will have to die first in order to create a new motion, because they already motioned in second to approve this. So then they're gonna have some motion to amend.
Both of them can agree to amend their initial. You don't have to have to die. They can, if, if they like the motion. Ashley, Dana could say, yeah, oh, make that my motion. You don't have to. So it would be a motion to adopt and accept the proposal by V and K to include.
To include an amendment to our design contract from Maxim and Acton. To add the sidewalk design. And including with that a public hearing. And negotiation with Land O' Lakes.
That's really wordy.
Here's the, where you could just say do an amendment to the contract for the sidewalk project.
Correct.
As long as Dave knows all the things that I'll have to put in that.
Right, that's all they need is the amendment.
Yes.
You'll second that as a, as a. Great, it's been moved and seconded to uh, accept this with set amendment. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you. Uh, new business, eight A, consider motion naming the official newspapers of the city in West Liberty. As West Liberty Index to be the primary and Muscatine Journal to be the secondary. Is there a motion to approve? Move and seconded. Any discussion? I think this is typical. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Eight B, setting a date for public hearing for budget, a budget amendments. Uh, to be January third, twenty twenty three, uh, city council meeting. Their motion to approve and, and, or others. And direct the city clerk to publish notice of such hearing. Yes. There a second? It's moved and seconded. To set the date for the public hearing for a budget amendment. This is a fairly typical thing as well. Um. Let's, any discussion?
Is there, is there anything that is? I'm thinking for a bunch of things.
And it'll be, the, I'm sure there'll be some other things, but it's mainly for the ARCA. We'll, we'll probably get a write-up because. Should be fun, so, you know, but be fair.
So that's what's already on this about?
What?
The, the budget amendment.
Well, that's, that's part of the reason that, that we're doing. There may be other things that we will put in that.
Okay.
She'll, she'll put up the main.
So the ARCA, um, know about it and some other things. I think, yeah, there, there, we have a face of the front through there.
But we thought the ARCA money already, right?
But it wasn't.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Budget has to be amended to actually expend it. Okay, any other discussion? Motion and a second to uh, set the date for the public hearing. And direct the city clerk to publish notice of such hearing. All those in favor say aye. All opposing say no. Carries three to zero. Eight C, we're talking about the proposed storm water evaluation study. By Beanster and Kim is there. Uh, I don't know what we talked about. Well, we, we have talked about this a little bit. There was um. Public comment about uh, water that was backing up. And so this is basically. Let's discuss it more, but if there's a motion to bring. To approval, how is that?
Is the motion to talk about it?
It's a motion to approve.
And then you'll talk about it.
As normal.
Great, motion approved. Second.
Motion and seconded to approve. Walk us through this one as well.
Okay, you have the color photo ID. So there's basically, the next time I will bring them, there's basically two basins that are involved, two drainage areas. One of them very close to the middle school. Yep. I'm sorry, elementary. Are they, I, I've been by there a number of times now, so are they putting like a new? Okay, so, so that area we know has flooding problems. So that was one of the main areas, then there's an area, I wish I would have had it on here, but over more. That that drains the other direction.
Yeah.
And it drains down through the wrecking, um, but the um. Sorry, Rainbow Drive, and we told you that we were upsizing that contract, that there's an arrow, you can see on your link, the arrow. We are upsizing that during the project, because we knew that. Eventually flow is gonna have to get through there, and we've already looked at this red area. And we know that there's ponding, what we were gonna do is do a study for you. Of these two areas, look at all the intakes, then we look at like rainfalls, a two-year rainfall. A ten-year rainfall, a hundred-year rainfall. See what the ponding levels look like as it is now, so we bring this back to you in color, next time I will make sure. And you'll see all the ponding areas. Then we'll put in some improvements, for instance, upsize some sewers. Maybe, and also intakes, a lot of times these intakes aren't made, we'll upsize the intakes. Show you what that would do, what what kind of improvements those would make, and then what cost would come with those. And that's basically what that rain study will show. How bad is it? Because really, there's sometimes it's. Um, during a two-year storm. You should be able to drain the street very good, if you can't, you've got big problems. When you get past a ten-year, you're not supposed to be able to drain that fast, it's supposed to kind of cool and then go. But what I already probably know is your pipes aren't big enough, so hitting the six is way too old. And we'll be able to tell you all of that if I'm honest.
Yeah, when you say a two-year storm, I know you don't mean a storm that lasts for two years.
No, what I mean is, um, a predictable storm, every two years, there's there's calculation.
One of this level, and then over ten years, there's a big one.
Right, and a two-year one usually correlates to something like two inches of rain.
Okay.
So you know your every two years, right on these bases, not anywhere in town, right here, you're gonna have a two-year storm.
Okay.
What does that mean? Because that's really when you usually get the most. People say, hey, it just rained two inches, if it rains ten inches.
Yeah.
Oh, they're ready for it, they know. So that's what the study does, we do these studies a lot. Um, a lot of times, the improvements are more expensive than what you think, but at least you'll know. What could be done and what should be done.
This is uh, I think, one of the N K's kind of specialties, right?
Yes.
Water runoff and wastewater treatment and this kind of thing.
Water, wastewater is what wastewater found it on, those kind of things. Right now, our street capacity is probably is this. It's ever been also, so we're, we're real strong in this, and personally, it's my strength too, so that's.
So this is just a study for them to look at it and see what uh could be done, potentially to solve um these problems.
Where's this magical four thousand dollars in front of, okay, so for example that.
We're collecting.
It's per customer, it's not four dollars a month, it's per utility customer, so. And then we have our commercial that is based on E R U size, so it it's different based on.
But you know what that's bringing on a monthly basis total?
Um, I can look into it, we have, there's multiple different parcel sizes, so I would have to pull the entire commercial and industrial to look at it.
Do we know that this is like where the worst flooding situation happens?
That's why I provided you that map, I wasn't sure, that was the area you guys would. I wanted to make sure I was in the right area.
Thank you for asking. I'm also not aware, but if you're sure, I'm glad you asked.
No, I wasn't.
On Eighth Street, on Eighth Street. Which is what is listed on there, that Eighth Street is that section down there. The Eighth Street.
Down where.
I heard Eighth Street and I heard school, and then I wasn't sure, was this school, but I, we do know that this is a bad area.
Yes.
I already know from history, looking at things and.
That's the one that I think we talked about, may have rewound that about ten years ago.
And even, I did not do all of the design on um, on on Maxon and Rainbow. But the guy that did that was really concerned with water coming through there, because he he noticed and said, hey. It looks to me like there's a big basin, this, it backs up already, and I think he had talked to. Council member Perrin's husband, who had said that they're having huge problems in that area, so we were.
Yeah.
We were looking into that.
What happens is like people with small cars can't even drive through to get.
We'll show you that, we we can show you that graph. How deep the water will be in those intersections, how deep in the low, if you drive, you'll see swales where the. Street comes down this way and comes down this way, and we can tell you just how deep that water would be.
As a study like this, I I think the longevity of it or the, I mean usefulness of it would be quite long, even if some of these improvements didn't happen for.
Right, but usually we do, we prioritize. And that study will say, this is what we think you should do first, second, third.
Sixty hours from a hydraulic engineer, sixteen by a senior civil engineer, and sixteen hours of clerical.
Most of that is the hydraulic engineer, he's very good. And he'll be doing, he'll, he'll be doing all the modeling for us. And he, when he does that modeling, he'll be able to tell us what the intakes are supposed to be. And then he'll be able to tell you, this intake's not working, this one is working.
So the twelve thousand dollars will have been color copies?
My mistake.
It, it's not your fault, it's came black and white when we printed it out at City Hall. Their color, I have color in mind, but.
Personally, well, color eleven by seventeen, oh, it could be that I'm getting a little older and uh, you know, it's always nice.
Here, are there any other questions by council for this uh project? Uh, there is a motion and a second to approve this uh study. For V and K to. Look at the um, the storm water.
Okay, okay, that's what, that's what I'm adding.
We'll make sure that this covers everything. With the motion and a second. With the motion and second to approve, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no, motion carries three to zero. Excellent, we'll move on to reports. And you're again first on the list, Leo, so uh, feel free to share with us.
The only other thing is, if start looking at well number two in the powerhouse, what we can do to segment that off. From the powerhouse, which isn't an easy task, and we met with your utility staff, and we got some options. So that's just getting that all.
Great.
That's all I have.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. I have a lot of questions for you, uh, City Manager Holden?
Just if you have any questions on, I've got folks here that have uh their staff reports for the month. Where we're all here if you have questions on it.
I have a question, but first, I just wanna thank the people that wrote in about that problem from the community. Because I would have never known that that was happening, so I'd never go to that site, don't live outside of, this shows how important it is for people to use. You know, the the city council and city staff to make sure that we're aware of this. Sorry.
No, that's great, and I I I think you're right, it's great that, that there can be action on it, right, so.
Just so we can make sure that makes it with rundown.
Today.
So we'll be, we'll be preparing the rundown in-house.
That's, this is Brittany. For everybody who doesn't know, this is Brittany, and she will be helping out with that, so.
You're gonna be preparing rundown?
It's gonna be uh like a combination of people doing it, so.
If you guys need help with any of that, that's what I do for the newsletters, all that, so. Use me, free of charge. I'm happy to assist.
Great.
The other question I had was, I I read in the chief's report about another offer being deconning because of salary, it was wondering.
That's the same one, it's just, that happened during that month, so.
Gotcha, I wanted to, my question is, how many times does this happen?
It's the same one, he. And and it's a long story, one that I want to share here, but if you wanna hear the details of it.
No, it's fine, I just wanted to make sure you didn't keep having this hour.
It's, it comes, every candidate that I've interviewed so far has mentioned that the salary is low, thankfully, we have. Gained people still, um, with the hope that we're going to continue to grow as a city, which then the department will grow to follow suit, so. Um, but yeah, that was the one that I had talked about before, it's just that monthly report, that's where, that's the month that happened, so.
And and when the, when this conversation happens, is there any room for negotiation? Or does the city have to prove that to allow you to be able to?
We, we've got our, our matrix, and I follow the matrix based on the, the, the way the matrix is. Personally, I think it needs adjusted, I think the wages probably all across the city, but definitely in my department. Um, because we have different titles at the same pay scale.
Oh, gotcha.
So like, uh, and so I'm not sure how to interpret that. So instead of having the chief has it their own pay scale, and the sergeant has their own pay scale, and the officer has their own pay scale, it's got officer and corporal in the same pay scale.
Oh, okay.
So theoretically, the corporal with rank higher should be making more, but they're in the same pay scale, so.
Right.
That's.
That doesn't make sense, because you want to stay so you can advance in rate.
Yeah.
And and a lot of that is because you want more money.
Yeah. And as we're coming up with ideas of how to entice officers and bring them in, um, and I've been reaching out to other agencies. The newest thing is they've started coming up with two pay scales where there's a live-in-town pay scale, which is higher, and to live outside of. Live outside of town pay scale, which is whatever the normal is, so that way, if we can entice them to come into town, they're more likely to stay. So we start you off at a higher pay scale, some departments, it's a, a yearly bonus, some departments, it's like you start three percent higher. Like here's your regular, and then you lived in, you're moving into town, once you do, it's a three percent bump, so we can bring them here, keep them here, instead of them. Like Nick Blocker, who was working here, was living in Mary, or sorry, living in Cedar Rapids, so he was driving every day.
Yeah.
And I couldn't convince him to move, because he said, my wife will not.
And is it, is Jessica still living far away or?
She has not sold her home, so she still comes in, stays with a friend to work her days, and then on her days off, she goes back. So we're still trying to find her place too.
Is that something that could be worked on though, and they, the entire matrix, it sounds like that's something that.
It, it was a matrix.
I agree.
I would, I would love to set up time, I just, I feel like actually I haven't been able to talk about when is a good time to take kind of a big project like this on. Just to work with the city and discuss all this and understand that sort of the finance committee will be right with each other committee. Which we're both on, not anymore. Finances, yes, but the other one about somebody else was.
I think Josh is on policy and personnel, I think Josh is. But I would have to look, but I'm pretty sure that it's Josh and Dana on that one, so.
But that's not part of, when you says we're gonna work on the budget coming up and stuff, that's not part of that, that's a separate one to that, to the budget.
That would be separate from.
We'll be working on, we'll, we'll be looking at the matrix, because that is part of our process, and we'll have to do that in-house.
Right.
We'll prepare something and bring it to the council.
I mean, we, we have something that's adopted for next year.
I mean, from other, other matrices and stuff that you've worked with.
Well, there's.
This, this, this is the matrix that I've used for twelve years, and it was broad, and I think. I don't agree, I don't think that when she looked for like. Type jobs, she always got the same comparison, even not, everybody does. A lot of communities our size don't have the electric and some of the other things, so we just need to do a better job of looking for. Cities.
More like, yes, and then we can see what those relationships are. Well, something maybe out of the by-state.
Well, and like with, like the city itself, like our police department, and the amount of area that they actually patrol. That wasn't necessarily taken into consideration, or positions, like in other cities, they have multiple people, different people that do. And whereas here, it's one person who's taking all those tasks on, so it's a lot different to put in comparison to cities who have. Different structure than what we do, so. That was something that was discussed, we did discuss that with the interim when she was here.
Okay. Need to make a special finance meeting for, or do we, will we automatically all be talking about it anyway?
Any other questions by council or staff? Reports? Mister Tivers, I'm glad that you're here tonight. Can you give us a verbal report? Yes. I, I feel like this report is not adequate for council.
It's about what we do, our staff is so, so low that we can't do much more than read meters and move streetlights. I have, I have, I have an engine, an engine man and an apprentice. So we do our daily work orders and our load weights, and. And we go and work on streetlights.
Says all, yeah, all you're able to.
That's about all we can do.
What are, what are, when you say daily work orders, what does that entail, what, what would be an example of some of the work orders you did in the last month?
Interchanges. It's about what we do, interchanges. That's what we're doing, till our staff is adequate enough to do actual line work.
What does locate mean?
Go out, locate underground wires.
Okay, spreading the lines.
And when you say, I'm sorry, I don't know any of these words, when you say like we need more staff to go out and do line work, what does that?
Yeah, good question.
We have to have qualified linemen to go out and work on the power lines themselves.
Okay, do they like deteriorate over time in maintenance, or I literally know nothing.
There's maintenance that can be done on them.
Okay.
Yeah, there are holes that need to be changed, secondary wires that we have created.
So in the absence of the, the workforce on staff to do that work, is it not being done now, or how does it get done?
Just not being done.
It's not being done.
Yeah.
What's the situation with hiring?
The pay is so low that we're not getting anybody to come in.
And I've been working on surveying the communities for line, so we can probably sell something to. Increase our line person.
Yeah.
So in the end, I mean, will that ultimately costs us more money because upkeep isn't being done on, because we keep and then like.
There are certain things now that if we ha- ha- have an issue, it's gonna contract, we'll come in, you, you pay a premium for them to come in.
Yeah, got it.
The work is covered in that way, but it's obviously more expensive. Yeah.
And was that something we'll talk about when you talk about the budget too?
We'll probably have some for you before that.
Okay.
Are there other things that can happen in the department as far as retention of employees, or, I mean. We've lost, I guess we've lost some recently or over the years, I don't know, I don't know the backstory to be honest, and why we're, why we're low, but. I guess it's just.
Because they left, because money, they both got a seven, eight dollar an hour raise.
So it's in your financial incentive to move, yeah.
And that, that's why I'll probably piggyback off that, that's why I think it's a citywide problem, because I was talking to one of the. And that, that's why I'm gonna piggyback off ahead. That's why I think it's a citywide problem. So I was talking to one of the deputies. For the Works for County and he makes more than I do. And one of the officers we interviewed makes more than I do, like as an officer. So I think that's, it's probably citywide. I don't think it's just that's Department of Mine. I think it's probably, and that's where it is a whole budget issue. It's figuring out.
Slightly more than my student debt.
Yeah, I mean, that that is a, that is certainly an issue, so. Should talk about that, but at the same time, there are a lot of benefits to living in a small town. I think there's some trade offs there, you know, that are. Um, there's a reason we're all here and love this town, so. Uh, we were gonna say.
I should say, you know, part of it, general fund, it's just our tax base has its own, that's, that's part of our issue. That's why we need to grow and have more homes. It'll take time.
And that's really the key is.
For the general fund for.
Presidential.
Police, fire, administration, library, park and rec. They're all the ones that are funded by. Your property tax basis because of rollback and other things, it's just shrunk over.
Be knowledgeable about the workers in the city of where everybody's falling with the pay that they're receiving. Is it adequate? Is it more or less? Is it just across the board?
I would say across the board, it's it's probably low. It's it's coming up where. Whether tax base is not born, it's difficult to. Because you still have to. You know, like for, for be being, you still have to be able to buy cars, gas and supplies. Same thing for.
As an example, so the library.
I don't know, water, wastewater, uh, of of electric, you know, it's just making sure that our rates. That's part of the reason, you know, the verbal, you know. You do need a person that's part of that was given that rate increases to have a person brought in for, so like. And hopefully get another person to have a staff of four plus that's what we use.
Another thing that you probably need to think about is currently, the two people that are there. One is gonna be retired and shortly, another one's gonna be leaving probably not long after that. That's over almost sixty years worth of line and engine knowledge that you're not gonna have because nobody is staying here. Because they can go to R E C, they can go to Mid America, they can go to Olliant, they can go to Sipco. And make eight bucks an hour ease more, so. When those two are gone. Knowledge of anything that goes on in the city is gone.
So it's, it's, that makes it all more important to get people in now who can be trained by them, I think would be the, the solution.
That's the, so this is gonna go back to your cost of service study. Okay? The cost of service study within that is, like Dave said, is going to be adding staff. By, by extending it out, you are not, you're now cutting your ability to add staff.
So, and 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 by the way, and I apologize, I I meant to ask you for your thoughts on the race study while we're discussing it and I, and I didn't do that. Um, but eh, talk to us about that. I mean, what needs to happen to make? Maybe it's, is it, is it just a case of, we just really need to go and raise? Raise the salaries?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not talking race by, I'm talking you gotta raise the guys. My guys need to get paid to do line work. The line work that is done in the city is absolutely no different than the line work that an R E C does. Uh, private utility does. Uh, we do the same work, it's just in a smaller area. The power, the the voltage on the lines, I have all these lines, it's the same voltage.
Yeah.
This is all the same. In fact, if you wanna think about it. When you compare an R E C to the city, not only do we have to do all the same things that they do. We also have to maintain a generation station.
Right.
So when you wanna compare apples to apples, our our apple is probably a little bit riper than what theirs. Because we have to maintain the generation station and that has to be manned by two people per ocean. And currently. We can only do that for X amount of times because we only have, actually, we can probably only do it for sixteen hour. Because there are only two full bike people that can do it and that's me and John. Because we can't keep anybody around long enough to learn the system.
I assume the race study was done with uh wages that are current, not looking at any changes there, right? So it's almost like that's a, that throw everything off to to change the wages, but.
Not necessarily. I mean, that's, I I think. I'll, I'll verify, I think we had some increase in pay.
Maybe council just wanna ask, you know, city. Number department to look into this and see whatever drastic changes need to be made to. Move this forward.
Cause we do need your line wired.
Yesterday.
We need to align and hire so that we can hire another apprentice.
Prentice, yeah, right.
We can only have one apprentice per line in it right now. The apprentice is working off of my journeyman ticket.
Right.
Alan, you had, you were gonna say something.
Um, in order to bring my wage up, um, I'm the lowest paid department head um by twenty one thousand dollars. Um, and and in order to do that, that's my um materials budget, which is the books. That's my programming budget and that's the building. So I can't make that decision to raise my own salary, because otherwise then we don't have a like rate.
Feel like we need a, no, no.
I have, I have a question as true, but like I only lived in this town for like five years. Has it always been as bad or just like been ongoing?
It's just, you know, eh, I think I remember saying eh eh at one point. Uh, when the city brought in eight hundred, maybe some thousand dollars of property tax. Because of rollbacks and things have gone on. It's unlike on residential property, the state has what's called the the rollback. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar home. You're only being taxed on a percentage of which is getting down to about fifty percent. So and they, they ratchet that rollback. It used, it used to be at a hundred, they ratchet, I mean. When I started in business, it's probably, I think the rollback was maybe. We're paying eighty seven, five percent of that is just continued to erode over the years because the state changes that. So the property tax the city used to bring in was in the eight hundred thousand plus range. Now we're like six fifty, so we've lost five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in just property tax dollars. To work or utilize to pay for administration, police, fire, park and rec.
And then the other part of that is that the electric rates went up pretty slightly.
Right.
And we're not, we're not building anything and we're having properties. And I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying what's happening is the properties are just being subdivided into apartments. So we're getting people and we're growing, but our tax base doesn't ever change because it's still a property. Where like for my department specifically, that's more people, same thing with fire and ambulance. But we also respond since we're the westernmost law enforcement in the county, we help county out. So we take care of like country heights and everything, but we don't draw anything from them, but we give them services. Same thing with fire and ambulance too, so it's, we're growing, but we're not growing. We're, we're going with what we need to give and what we need to do, but we're not growing as and pulling in more money. Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Well, it's an interesting discussion and I think. Let's see how we can do that for as many people you can, you know. That should definitely be a big part of the budget discussion for sure. Thankfully, it is a very great community to live in, uh, and so. There are definitely some trade offs. Or the committee.
The only thing that I wanna point out is the annual chamber meeting dinner, it's coming up in January, it's on January tenth. It's community center this year. They have social hour, five dinners, six, they have more wards. People want to see what you have, you want to come and other. That's, they're charging ten dollars a head this year for it, so take care of that, so just. If you'd let me know if you'd like to come or if you have reservations, probably here. Next week or so, I'll probably send an email out to everybody individually and just find out if coming, I just.
Great, fantastic. Other committee reports, things.
Yeah, I know it's getting me so too long, but um, fire department task, firing EMS taskers. Doing brain, we're trucking along and we're fire trucking along in um. And creating our um, our articles um to propose to council and the local trustees. And the volunteers of what an agency would look like. And um at the last meeting, we were kinda starting to go through these articles. We're taking a bunch of twenty eight year agreements from around the state. Um, when I say we, I mean India, Paris. And with the help of, you know, the fire chief and EMS coordinator and stuff like that, but um. So we, I I proposed the last meeting because we haven't really gotten to the nitty gritty of some of the things that. Some of the parties have disagreed on in the past to if, as a task force, if we do disagree on things. Um, to bring that to our different parties and get feedback of, these are the options that we can't quite, you know. Put on paper yet as what we would recommend, so we just wanted to make sure that that's an open um conversation. And the constituents on the task force will and bring that information back on on those things. Um, we're hoping to continue, we may need a little extension, but I'm not sure. I don't know, Dave, what your feels are, but.
I, I don't know, I. With the holidays, I think it's gonna be tough to probably hit that. Maybe just a little more time, just kind of depends on my schedule because I know if we win, like two or three weeks to have a meeting.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and I think, I think everybody's on the same page, but that's fine. As long as we're still communicating and still moving forward. Anything you wanna add? Cause you did join last couple of things too.
I do, in fact, uh, what I wanna add is that uh, I think council member Ling does his chair in the. Meeting has been really great and uh, so I just. Yeah, it's been interesting to sit in and start to learn about the entire um situation I've met. Um, separately with the fire department leadership and am scheduling a meeting with the local trustees. And then sat in on the last two task force meetings, so just kind of good for me to get caught up to speed on, on that. And uh, yeah, I appreciate it. Are there other committee meetings uh that should, that's for? Great, um, very last thing then, and it hasn't been a long uh night here, but. Had a lot of really good discussions and that's what we're here for, so I hope that uh everyone appreciates that time spent by certain who do. Uh, and one last thing I would like to say is just that I would like to thank uh Lee in particular, as well as. Uh, for, for the, for the putting up of the Christmas tree and it wasn't an easy task. Uh, I know Lee and Parks and Rec staff and streets staff and electric. We're all involved in in some way. I don't know exactly who was all out there on the tree, but I know that there was, they were fighting with the lights in the garden. It was a hassle or something that I asked for at the, kind of at the last minute, so I really appreciate that. I think people enjoyed lighting the tree.
It's a good turnout.
Well, it's freezing cold, but it was fun.
Real quick, tomorrow's our shop with a cop event, so we have mayor and council members, if you'd like to come, we're gonna be probably coming back in town to the community center around lunchtime. And that's where we'll do our pizza party. Santa is gonna be there, so, and we did put out a press release, so we're invited media. So if you haven't been doing it, you wanna come check it out, it's at the community center. Come in around lunch, come see how we've got it set up. I'd love to see you there.
We will be there before the city hall staff. We are closing city hall. It has been put out there that we will be closed. Um, we are helping out with the entire event, so we will still be checking drop boxes. Credit card payments, all that kind of stuff, voicemails, we will still be checking those, we just will not be open in the front office.
Anything else, like council, staff?
What you do here? Second.